Bonne sana hafaday, everyone. This hearing by the Committee on Public Accountability, Human Resources, the Guam buildup, Hagatnia revitalization, regional affairs, public libraries, telecommunications and technology is called to order. For the record, today is Friday, September 17th, and the time now is 2:00 PM. Sis Tumasi for joining us. In accordance with 5 GCA Chapter 8, subsection 8107, public hearing notices were sent on Friday, September 10th, 2021, adhering to the five-day notice and the second notice on Wednesday, September 15th, 2021. In addition, this hearing was also noticed on the legislature's website. Written testimonies may be submitted by emailing Senator Munia Barnes at GuamLegislature.org, or you may hand deliver to the office of Senator Tina Rose Munia Barnes at 163 Chalan Santo Papa, Hagatnia, Guam. On behalf of the chairperson of this committee, Tina Munia Barnes, I'd like to thank everyone for joining us, all of the appointees who are here today and those who have come to testify. I am Senator Amanda Shelton, the vice chair of this committee. I'd also like to recognize my colleague Senator Joanne Brown. Sis Tumasi for being here today. On today's agenda, we have the appointment of Elizabeth Seagale to serve as member Hagatnia Restoration Redevelopment Authority, HRA, Board of Commissioners, and the appointment of Dr. Judith S. Flores to serve as member Guam Educational Telecommunications Corporation, KGTF PBS Board of Trustees. We ask that those testifying abide by the following: to broadcast from a quiet room with little to no interruptions; to broadcast from a room with adequate lighting; to ensure that your face is visible; to ensure participants are in proper attire; to use respectful and professional language and conduct. Virtual background should not be utilized during this public hearing. When you are recognized to speak, please unmute your audio and state your name for the record. We will now begin with the first item on our agenda, the appointment of Elizabeth Seagale to serve as a member Hagatnia Restoration and Redevelopment Authority, HRA, Board of Commissioners. I'd like to note before we begin that we have received written testimony from Christine Wolk from RIM Architects, who was unable to join us on Zoom. She extends her support, and her letter can also be found in the Google Drive for my colleagues. We will begin with testimony with University of Guam President, Dr. Thomas Kreis.
Sis Tumasi, Senator Shelton, and greeting Senator Brown and everyone online. I just wanted to say that I support wholeheartedly the appointment of Elizabeth Seagale to the Board for the Hagatnia Restoration Board. And my particular expertise in recommending her is that she was the Chair of the Board of Regents of the University of Guam during the period of time that's always the hardest time for a board, and particularly for a board chair, which is the transition in the presidency or the headship of the unit that the board was responsible for. And so she was chair during the last year of Dr. Underwood's presidency. Then she managed the whole selection process for the next UOG president. And that process actually attracted a record number of applicants and included the first three sitting or former presidents of universities ever to apply for the position. And so that the number and the type of people who are applying, I think, is a testament to the professional search process and the effective promotion of UOG that Betty Gale and the board managed during that process. And then she was also chair during my first year as president. So the, you know, the kind of bringing in a president, you know, sort of training, training that new president, getting that person introduced is a tough job for the chair of a board. And so during that, she created a very professional presidential transition committee and process. So created a whole system for me to get to, to know the community and, and the university. And then she also inspired the strategic planning process that led to our Parahula Strategic Plan, which is our current strategic plan for a five-year period. And she came to the Board of Regents through the Regent Nominating Council, which is the way the University of Guam's Regents are appointed. So this is a separate council with community membership, with a, with a really rigorous and nonpartisan process of nomination, evaluation, and recommendation of three candidates for each Regent vacancy that then goes to the governor for selection and then confirmation by the senators. And so I think, I think of it as being a bit like the Oscars. So just being nominated is a high honor. And so, of course, being selected is a real mark of excellence and high esteem from the community. And as, as you no doubt will hear in further conversation, Betty Gale holds the distinction of being the first licensed female Chamorro Professional Engineer in Guam. And she was honored by being made a Fellow of the National Society of Professional Engineers just this past year. She's also the first woman to serve as a member and then as the chairperson of the Guam Board of Registration for Professional Engineers, Architects, and Land Surveyors, the PEELs Board. And as such, she's a role model for future engineers of all genders and, but especially for women who continue to be among the minority of PEs across the country and around the world. And because of the example of Betty Gale and other pioneering engineers, UOG's new School of Engineering has as many women as men in our approximately 130 civil engineering majors so far with our new School of Engineering. So Betty Gale's distinguished accomplishments and expertise are very well suited, I think, to the important work of the Hagatnia Restoration Board and her connections to the university and across the professional and business communities of Guam will ensure that the restoration project is well-connected and well-done. Sis Tumasi for the opportunity to endorse her with my highest recommendation.
Thank you very much, Dr. Kreis. And now we will move on to Mr. Andrew Gale.
Good afternoon, Senator Shelton and other senators of the Guam Legislature. My name is Andrew Gale. I am currently the Chief Operating Officer for GTA. I also serve as the Chairman of the Guam Salaways Board of Directors. Full disclosure, Betty Gale is my sister, and I'm her favorite brother. As an engineer, Betty is extremely qualified to be a member of the HRA. And her professional compliments and expensive work experience speak for themselves. Dr. Kreis did a wonderful job giving the highlights of those. As a board member, Betty is extremely knowledgeable of her duties and responsibilities. Being a member of a public board, she takes that role very seriously. And has, and I have received several personal comments about how good a board member she is from members of her other boards. My sister has also been the state coordinator for math counts for the last, I don't know, 37 years or so. And, and she makes me volunteer with her as well. So she really does, with that, she has demonstrated her, her dedication to public service and to causes that she firmly believes in, which is furthering STEM, really, furthering STEM in, in all, in all education processes and especially among women. So I'll keep my comments brief and say that I do support Betty in this endeavor. I don't think, I think the HRA will be a better and more complete board with her being a member of the board. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gale, and now Ms. Sandy Flores.
Hafaday, I'm Sandy Flores. I am the Director of the Council on the Arts and Humanities, but I'm here as the Acting Director of the HRA for Lassia Casil. I did look over Ms. Gale's resume and other information, and I just want to say that I'm so pleased to see such a civic-minded leader, not to mention a woman engineer with such great local experience applying to the board. I'm excited to see her, so I would, I would endorse her.
Thank you very much, Ms. Flores. We also have Mr. Joseph Menno from HRA. Will you be providing testimony today? Okay, thank you for joining us. I'd like to recognize my colleague Senator Tony Ada. Thank you, sir, for being here, as well as Senator Telotidwy Sis Tumasi. Now I'd like to turn it over to the nominee, Ms. Betty Gale.
Hafaday to the members of the Committee on Public Accountability, Human Resources, Guam buildup, Hagatnia revitalization, regional affairs, public libraries, telecommunications, and technology. My name is Elizabeth Gale, or I am also known as Betty Gale, and I'm honored to testify before you as an appointee to the Hagatnia Restoration and Redevelopment Authority Board of Commissioners. Guam is a small island in the vast ocean frontier of the United States, Asian, and international borders. Hagatnia, as the capital village of Guam, should be revitalized to incorporate Guam's unique culture, history, archaeology, arts, humanities, government, and people. HRA's vision for Hagatnia is, quote, "A vibrant Hagatnia as the center of cultural, civic, political, sports, and economic vitality for Guam and the Western Pacific," unquote. I subscribe to the same vision and feel Hagatnia should be developed and planned to encourage residents to live, work, and play in Hagatnia, for government offices to be centralized in Hagatnia, and for tourists to visit, shop, and learn about our history and culture in Hagatnia. According to the Hagatnia Master Plan, the HRA strives to restore and revitalize historical sites and parks to revitalize the city through public-private initiatives. The HRA is responsible for developing and maintaining an overall land use plan for the redevelopment of Hagatnia. To provide some of my background, I was born and raised Chamorro. I grew up on Guam, attending local elementary, middle, and high schools. My family and I spent many Sunday afternoons strolling through the Plaza de Espana and other areas in downtown Hagatnia, as well as the rest of the island, as my father enjoyed taking photos of the architecture, parks, beaches, ocean, and mountain vistas. We have many photos of us kids playing on the Palacio fence walls and huge fallen monkey pod trees in the Plaza de Espana Park. My parents always encouraged me and my siblings to pursue higher education in order to pursue our life's dreams. When I selected civil engineering as my career path, they fully supported me, even though it was such a male-dominated career. Upon graduating from college, I returned to Guam with a keen interest in giving back to my island community and contributing back to her growth and development. I wanted to engineer Guam into the 21st century and help it grow as a place, as a great place to live, work, and play. Being a HRA Commissioner would be a perfect board on which I could give back to my island community. I've been a licensed professional engineer for almost 30 years now, licensed in civil engineering on Guam, the CNMI, and Hawaii. In my career, I have always stressed that local professionals are sensitive to the island's culture, people, government, and community. Guam's engineers, planners, architects, and landscape architects bring their knowledge of Guam's harsh climate and environmental conditions to any project that they plan, study, design, or construct. I formerly worked for an international planning, engineering, environmental, and landscape architecture firm where I managed or worked on projects within or between all of the company's departments. I currently work for a local architectural firm managing multi, multiple, multi-disciplined design and planning projects, both inside and outside the fence. I would bring that same multi-disciplined project management experience to the HRA. For eight years, I served on the Guam Board of Registration for Professional Engineers, Architects, and Land Surveyors, or the PEELs Board. My experience on the PEELs Board would serve me well as a commissioner of the HRA, as that is a government of Guam Licensing Authority whose mission is to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the public. He seemed to be similar to the mission of HRA. I also served on the University of Guam's Board of Regents. During my tenure, we approved the current University of Guam Master Plan and approved several projects and initiatives to implement the Master Plan. And then I did work on the 2005 Hagatnia Master Plan, and I am happy and proud to see that many of the recommended projects have been implemented or planned for implementation in the updated Master Plan. As a practicing civil engineer, I want to encourage sustainable strategies that are suitable for island, for island use and communities. And this is something that I feel is very important in order to keep Guam and Hagatnia pristine and beautiful. As an HRA Commissioner, I would strive to ensure all projects implemented are designed, constructed, and operated as sustainable and energy-efficient for an enriching environment for all of Guam's people and visitors. Thank you for your consideration of my appointment to the HRA Commission.
Thank you very much, Betty. Congratulations on this appointment, and thank you for your willingness to serve in this capacity. I'd like to open the floor to my colleagues if they have any questions for you or any of the panel members. We'll begin with Senator Joanne Brown.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I just certainly appreciate the interest in Mrs. Gale wanting to serve on the Hagatnia Restoration. Certainly has a very impressive background in her field, but, and she didn't touch on it, but I just wanted to elaborate if there are any specific projects she would like to see put in place. I mean, we created Hagatnia Restoration, goodness, quite some time ago. And while we see projects here and there and renditions of plans to actually do some improvements to our capital city, we still have a ways to go in actually seeing tangible construction or private businesses here taking opportunity of the incentives that can be provided to modify existing structures to be complementary towards overall collective projection of how we would like to see our capital. And I wanted to find out if there are any specific projects she wanted to see, get off the ground. I mean, for me personally, I've always wanted to see the restoration of our governor's palace in Agania. But that's one of my interests. I wanted to find out from her, what would she like to see put in place during her tenure?
Sure, thank you for the question. One of the projects or phases that I'm very interested in is the Riverwalk development. However, we do have to overcome or resolve the flooding issue in Hagatnia. As you know, most of Hagatnia is considered a flood zone, either from the ocean wave along the shoreline or because of the river flooding. A lot of the federal agencies have been required to leave Hagatnia simply because of the flood zone issue that we're dealing with. So one of the things that I do understand is, is in the works, is working with the Army Corps of Engineers to update the master, the flood zone master plan. So perhaps we can get ourselves out of some of the flood zone issues so that businesses can come back to Hagatnia. And the Hagatnia Riverwalk project is, is a sweet project that I would love to see implemented sometime. It would be, it would be great to have something similar to what they have in San Antonio, Texas, I think is one of the models they were looking at. But just any, any city that has a river that goes through the city has a nice development along the waterfront or along the riverfront. And it'd be nice to have something like that in Hagatnia. And I believe the, there is a land, a land management, or they're calling it a lands project, that GURA is trying to develop for Hagatnia. And that would be consolidating the Department of Land Management, maybe GURA and other such agencies, similar agencies back into Hagatnia. So it would fill some of the, the open spaces that we have in our lot and block areas and actually fill in, fill in so that more of the, the block spaces are utilized fully. Those are just a few of the samples.
Well, no, that, I mean, that's, that's very, very exciting. I mean, we, often when we discussed this in previous years, I mean, we were looking forward to seeing that, not so much rest and part of it, we can't restore, but at least to, to create that activity and that flavor in our local capital so that it can continue to draw people back and be a center of activity. So no doubt with your background that you bring to the table, I think that will be very beneficial. Like you said, the whole flood zone issue has really limited construction, and it's created a lot of hurdles that probably interested people in wanting to build or rebuild here have kind of hesitated because of all the requirements they would have to address and insurance and all the other liabilities and dealing with constructing in a flood zone. So certainly look forward to your appointment, wish you well, and, and look forward to hearing some good things come out of the Hagatnia Restoration and, and projects to restore our capital. So thank you very much for your, your interest in serving. And certainly, Madam Chair, thank you for the opportunity to be able to comment and ask questions of the nominee.
Thank you very much, Senator Brown. Senator Tony Ada?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Gale, for accepting the governor's appointment to the Hagatnia Restoration Revitalization Authority. Perhaps my question would be, what would you like to see immediately that can be done? I mean, when you look at Hagatnia and you look at our streets, and perhaps this would probably be a good start somewhere before we can get all the businesses to start coming in and to revitalize Hagatnia the way, the way it should be. You notice the street parkings and the, more importantly, in front, like a GCIC building where you got cars parked on both sides of the street. And if you have a fire truck coming down the lane, they wouldn't be able to get through there. Do you think that we'd be able to, to address issues like that to start? Either we reline the streets or what's your thoughts on one-way streets within Hagatnia?
That was, that was very much discussed when we were working on the Master Plan in 2005. Some of the ideas that, that we tossed around were perhaps having a transportation hub, such as using the Paseo de Susana as like a bus transportation hub and have then a mini-bus system within Hagatnia. So people can take, drive into Hagatnia, park in the Plaza de Espana area, or not Plaza de Espana, the Paseo, the Plaza de Susana, I think is what it's called, area, and then take a mini-bus or, you know, maybe electric golf carts are used in some cities because they don't, they don't require a big, they don't, they're electric, first of all, so they're not contributing to the pollution, but they're getting people around to where they need to get to without congesting the streets. And there typically, I've been, I was in Rome when we rented a, an electric golf cart as on a tour, and we were able to also then drive up onto the park, onto various park sidewalks because we were a little golf cart. So perhaps those are things that could be used, just having a mini-transportation hub within Hagatnia that outs, outside vehicles and even buses can come into park and then, then use little buses or little electric cars or vans or golf carts to then get around within the village of Hagatnia to reduce the congestion on the streets.
I see. And when you spoke about the San Antonio Riverwalk, did you have any, or any ideas into perhaps like around Skinner Plaza? You know, how they, they have like, they, they close off the streets and they allow the people to sit on, on the, on the streets and play music, the food trucks and things like that?
Yeah, so when the museum was planned, I was also on the, the team, the AE team that designed the, the museum. And the streets on both sides of the museum were changed from two, two-way with parking on both sides to one-way in each direction with the, with the diagonal parking. And that was also seen as a way to kind of block off the, the block at the street to have kind of a block party. And so the Skinner Plaza behind the museum is kind of seen as a, as a perfect, you know, kind of square that can be blocked off. Now that the Department of Administration building has been demolished, there's also another opportunity to have kind of a blocked-off area in the Plaza de Espana, Guam Museum, the old Palacio walls kind of have that area as another kind of super block that can be used for fairs or, or playground or, you know, the legislature is right in the middle of that. So perhaps, you know, the, the festivals can, can start to use Agania or Hagatnia for some of, for those type of block fairs, maybe on a, you know, on a Sunday. I think the skating, there was a skate, a couple of years ago, there was like a skating or skateboard festival that occurred in Agania. Those are usually on a Sunday when there's no downtown traffic and the streets can get blocked off. Those are kind of perfect opportunities to encourage, you know, encourage fair trade, like shopping and, and sightseeing and, you know, playing in the, in the field. I think one of the dog companies, Fetch, that's located near the mermaid, they have like a Sunday day at the park for the dogs so people can bring their dogs in and go play at the park and come to fetch. Things like that, I think, are, are great little, little ways of revitalizing Hagatnia, especially on the weekends.
Yeah, that'd be great to see, you know, to see Hagatnia get lively again and hopefully that you'll be able to be a, a part of that growing, the growing plan to revitalize our capital city and eventually one day be able to bring our seat of government, you know, the governor's office back to Hagatnia. But thank you for your acceptance of the governor's nomination, and we look forward to voting on your nomination for the board. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Ada. Senator Telotidwy?
Sis Tumasi, Madam Chair, for the opportunity. Hafaday, Betty, I had the opportunity to work with you at GBB at one time when we were doing some work on, on the, well, I guess, the infrastructure and stuff and destination management team. So I definitely know you have the capability and, and the love and heart for this island to see what's in the best interest for her. And wow, to go now to something huge like this, it's, it's just, it's very heartfelt that, that you want to take this on because it's huge. Since 2005, I mean, a lot has changed on the map. And if most of us in the 35th had met with Lassia, the director, and she was really gung-ho, ready to go out there, show us all the documents and the latest designs and architectural designs. But she, there's one thing that is lacking, and she's having a difficult time, and it's funding. Like everything, it's funding. Nothing this will happen without that. So any ideas, you know, suggestions? I know you're in civil engineer, but this is something that really needed. Any ideas on how to generate some funding for this?
Well, I know everyone is fighting for the infrastructure funding that the federal government is now handing out. But I believe we have, if we apply for grants that have to do with, with community development, and GURA, I believe, has access to those types of grants. I think it's just strategic in trying to make sure we, we have the grants. I think the Master Plan needs to be an approved plan that we then use to apply for these grants or these federal funds. So my understanding is it still needs to be approved. So I think once it gets approved, then that'll give us more opportunity to apply for federal grants. And, and it's not, I mean, we're, we're a US territory, so it's probably, we're probably not allowed to seek grants from other governments, such as Japan or Australia or other nations. But perhaps we can do it through the Rotary Club or something like that is those, those civic groups that have associations with other nations that are interested in helping a community such as Guam.
Excellent idea, especially on those other countries, on how we can bring some money in there from those countries and being accepted through a nonprofit. Like Secretary of the Pacific is in another area that also deals with funding from European nations and as well as island nations nearby. So that's a great idea, moving in. And any chance that you might look into doing a phased-in approach? Because right now, if you go on the website, you can see the whole map of the whole of Hagatnia and what the foreseeable future is. But is there anything on a phased-in approach? Because right now, we have the, the museum that's up. So what would be the next step, you know, to, to go into areas which can be approved? Is there going to be a, what, a map or a plan put together for a phased-in approach?
And, you know, I'm, I'm still learning the plan. But I believe there are, there probably is an implementation strategy and plan. And like I mentioned, the Riverwalk and the, the Department of Land Management Building. So GURA is taking on the Department of Land Management Building, and that is one of the, one And that is one of the, one of the methods of filling in, bringing the government back to Hagatnia as well as filling in the, the undeveloped areas. So I'd have to, I'm, I'm sure there is a phased implementation. I just, ma'am, I, I haven't studied this plan to know exactly what the implementation is, but I do know that those are several of the projects. And then we do have meetings for the, the Governor and the Army Corps of Engineers are working currently to determine the, the Hagatnia flood zone issue. So once the flood zone issue is, is also resolved, then projects along the riverfront in Hagatnia could probably be implemented as well, again with, with funding and, and public, private-public partnerships as well as grant, you know, federal or, or other such grants that we can seek.
Well, there is one area in this, in the Hagatnia Restoration Plan that I've always been very interested in and did some study when I was at GBB was the cruise industry and the ability to move the, the, I guess, the waste station that's down there in, in Bo Basin and to move it further down and the cost of that. It's, I know it's, it's spent, it's very expensive, but it's revenue generating, you know, with the cruise industry coming into that and porting themselves there. I know that's a long way off, but it's, it's very nice to be able to come, you know, people coming in, cruising, step right into the beautiful, you know, village, our capital of Hagatnia. But I know it's long far, and far-fetched right now.
And, and, you know, to be honest, I, I am a cruise tourist, but I also feel really bad when a huge giant cruise ship, you know, goes through Venice and it's taller than the tallest churches in the, in the area, comes through on tugboat. And then the entire island in Venice is overwhelmed by, you know, 7,000 tourists in one day. So it's kind of a, I think we need to balance it. And then also with COVID, I'm not sure if even cruise tourism is, is going to be stagnant for a while until we can figure out the issues with COVID. I do know that it was a very long-range vision that was a part of the original master plan. And then the other issue is because the, because the water, wastewater treatment plant in, is, is on that island, that the man-made island that was built is, has received federal dollars for improvement. It would be very difficult to, to convince the federal government that now we want to scrap it. So I think we need to balance it.
Yeah, or, or at least move it is what, what I was looking at. But I, you know, I want to thank you so much, Betty, you know, for continuing to give back to the community by serving in this capacity. Because it does take a lot of your personal time away from, you know, friends, family, and even your own special time for yourself to do this. And I want you to know, I'm greatly appreciated for all that you're giving to the island. And I know you're going to do an awesome job. I've seen you at work and have total confidence. And you have total confidence in my support for you. Thank you so much again. Take care and be safe.
Thank you. You too.
Thank you very much, Senator Titigui. And I'd like to thank everyone who's come today to testify and to be a part of this hearing, especially to our appointee, Ms. Betty Gell. Thank you very much for being here. We look forward to completing your committee report and moving your nomination in this month's session and supporting your nomination. So thank you very much. We look forward to your work. To us, Mossi, for answering this call to service. With that, this public hearing for Ms. Betty Gell is now complete. And we will move on to our next session, our next agenda item, which is the appointment of Dr. Judith S. Flores to serve as a member Guam Educational Telecommunications Corporation, KGTF PBS Board of Trustees. If there's anyone here to testify for Dr. Flores. Okay, we have Mr. Joey Frankwes, who is also a member of the Board of Trustees. Please, sir, go ahead.
My name is Jonathan Hafey, but it is Hamdun. I'm here to give my testimony in support of Dr. Judy Flores in joining at the PBS Board. I have known Judy for many years in regards to how important it has been to know where her heart lies in regards to our culture, our language, and how she really implements her artistic values into how she works in the community and how her programs and her teaching really are emphasized in everything that she does. I've worked with Judy in many different levels of, of projects in the past that have to deal with the perpetuation of language and culture. And I know that in working with her, with her projects down in Alahan at Getpogu, working with the instruction of Getpogu organization in building the, the village, it will, the San Tomor there, which basically I had an opportunity to really appreciate during the time that my dad, who was a musician, had been given an opportunity to go there to perform for the Manamco down there on the weekdays during the course of their stay at Ginean and Getpogu. And I thought that that was such a wonderful way to encapsulate the whole environment of what in Alahan really represents in their old impressions of the area, of the, of the local architecture with regards to the village and the kind of sentiments that people receive when they go there and experience the visit into in Alahan. Even as, as a teacher, I think that Judy really goes over and beyond the whole aspect of how important art is and that through her work with, with art, that she's been able to really transcend Chamorro culture and help to kind of more or less invite others to be able to experience that and to even go further and creating new ideas of how you can incorporate art in the culture and maintaining that moving forward. I really enjoy working with Judy because she really puts a lot of her passion into working with people and she's very people-oriented. And I think that as a part of this board, she's going to bring on a completely different perspective from that aspect and how the board will be able now to have a sense of, of understanding and even more so enlightened the board to be able to think outside of the box, if you will, artistically and creatively to be able to have PBS programs and, and projects to be aligned with some of these things that we really need to be able to connect with. And our culture and our language is definitely a part of education. And I think that as long as we're teaching and allowing students in our public school system or the private school system to be able to benefit from this, PBS has always been very supportive of education. And that's the main mission of PBS. And I think that as a board member, that Judy will be able to contribute immensely in that area. And I'm really excited to say that I am very much, very happy to, to say that I'm very excited to see what we're going to be able to do at PBS with Judy's input from this point forward. So Duncan, that's it to us, Mossi, Dr. Flores. And I really look forward to having you as a part of our board.
Thank you very much, Mr. Frankwes. And I'd like to read into the record at this time a testimony from the Chairman of the PBS Board of Trustees, and that is Mr. Donovan Brooks. It reads Hoffa de, Madam Chair. My name is Donovan Brooks and I am the present Chairman of the Board of Trustees for KGTF PBS Guam. In the event I am unable to participate in the scheduled 2:00 PM confirmation hearing for Judy Flores, I would like to voice here my unequivocal support for her confirmation. I have long admired her art. I think she is an exceptional artist deserving of recognition, not only here but globally. I know she has a long history of community service on Guam, most recently with the Council on Arts and Humanities Agency. I am looking forward to working with her to bring our community and public television closer together. Thank you for this opportunity to support Ms. Flores's nomination. Sincerely, Donovan Brooks, Chairman, Board of Trustees, Guam Educational Telecommunications Corporation. Thank you very much, Mr. Brooks. And I still see others on the line. If anyone else would like to provide testimony for Dr. Flores. If not, we will move on to the nominee herself. Dr. Flores, please go ahead. Please unmute yourself. Thank you.
I knew I would forget that. Thank you, Senator Shelton and the senators on the panel that are hearing this, this hearing. My name is Judith S. Flores. I am better known as Judy Flores. And I am honored to be appointed to the Board of Directors of KGTF PBS. This opportunity will continue my journey of service on several boards that help guide policy, vision, and activities in a broad range of artistic endeavors. First of all, I'd like to say that I consider myself a daughter of Guam, having been raised in, in Alahan where my family came when I was 11 years old. And I was guided and loved and corrected and everything else by the Manamco there. And I, I am eternally grateful for that experience. I started my career as a secondary art teacher in the Guam Public Schools in 1971. 10 years later, I moved to Guam Caja as their first folk arts coordinator. Those were 10 very exciting years of identifying, documenting, and promoting traditional arts and artists. During that time, I worked with Inahaan leaders to create Getpogu Chamorro Cultural Center. We also developed networks across the Pacific and with the California diaspora, bringing our traditional artists to festivals and fairs in Long Beach, Fairfield, and the Festival of Pacific Arts in Australia, Samoa, and the Cook Islands during the time that I served there. For promotions of our artists, I was able to leverage video companies who produced weekly TV shows to feature our local artists. It was a mutually beneficial arrangement with no production costs to the government. And I always am very pleased to see Tom Wunchuk there at the legislature because we worked very closely together at that time. With the identification of traditional art forms, I sought the guidance of the National Endowment for the Arts Folk Arts Division to create our own Masters Award Program. In 2002, I was appointed to serve on the GBB Board, providing 10 years of advising and encouraging the promotion of our own local artists. So my history of involvement in the arts will hopefully facilitate more networking among Guam's various arts-related entities. I'm impressed by the talents, expertise, and administrative energy at KGTF PBS. I've seen them develop and promote more local talent that engages kids, adults, and Chamorro and micro-nation cultures. I hope to facilitate or expand new networking resources to help the board and administration realize their goals. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Flores. Congratulations on this appointment and to just Mossi for your willingness to serve. I'd like to ask my colleagues if they have any questions for you. I will begin with committee member, Senator Tony Ada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, Dr. Flores. And thank you for accepting the Governor's nomination for the KGTF Board. I think probably the only question I would have for you, Dr. Flores, is, you know, being in this, in this time of pandemic, what kind of programming would you like to see being offered on KGTF to help educate our children, be it regular education or in our cultural and traditional values here on our island? And how, how soon would you like to see that implemented?
Thank you for that question. The, I've, I've seen this, this trend already starting because of the more than, more than a year of the pandemic and it's, it's global. But I've also seen it on, on KGTF. And I, I think we need to pursue those, those kinds of activities. First of all, I'd like to see more local programming. And they, they have, in the recent years, I've really been impressed with what they've done with the local program. For example, we've got Don, Don and Kelmunia there who are, who are, have started the film festival. So, so we have those kind of talented people on board at KGTF. And, and we have local filmmakers, local videographers. We have a lot of local talent and, and it always touches me when, when we see familiar things on, on a big screen or on our TV screen. And I, I think our kids need that. So yes, I would like to see KGTF continue on the path that they are already embarking on. And I certainly hope to help them.
That's great to hear. And, you know, I hope that, you know, the, the programming that goes out on KGTF continues to help our children, especially now where they're not so much into face-to-face educational learning and, you know, try to get them back into that, that norm of learning. But in the interim, that we, we give them some type of system or some type of programming that can actually guide them towards there. You know, I, I see it every day, the challenges. I mean, we've been on Zoom all day long for confirmation hearings, proclamations for appointments and resolution presentations. And the difficulty that I see the children going through, trying to stay on Zoom, learning, getting educated. And, you know, I, I think that if we can just break away from that now and, you know, try and let them see what's going on. And I, I like how you said that, you know, we continue to teach our children on the, on our cultural and the programming is going on in KGTF. And I, with you there, I look forward to many good programs coming on and educating our children. So thank you for your willingness to step up and I look forward to voting on your confirmation as well. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Ada. Senator Brown.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I really don't have any questions for Ms. Flores. I think her, again, I mean, all the creative arts over the years that she's brought to the island and her whole resume really speaks for itself. And I know she'll do very well in bringing her talents and her experience to our, to our public station and improving the programming. And very much like her comment earlier about doing more local programming, especially a lot of our young people now are not growing up with the same influences from grandparents that maybe our generation at the tail end was able to experience. So certainly look forward to her work and thank her for her interest in continuing her public service. That, Madam Chair, I'll conclude my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Brown. Senator Titigui.
Thank you, Madam Chair. From Judy, I just sent you a picture, by the way. I know you had the picture of my father when he, in the Boy Scouts. And now you'll have one of my mom in, in Alahan Bay, 1955, helping to pull the net. And when you mentioned earlier how you grew up in, in Alahan, what you said that was really touching was the fact that the Manamco, they, they were there to guide you, but they also to tell you when you were wrong. And my mom can attest to that too as well. But, you know, I, I've known you for so many years and, and grew up knowing you in the village as the woman that is so helpful and, and caring and giving. And if we ever needed anything or inspiration, just go over to the corner of the village, you know, near the bridge where your parents' house was. And we can get our inspiration from that. And you're continuing to do that by now sharing your daughters, you know, with us, the people of Guam, to serve in a capacity that's going to definitely grow when it comes to the arts, you know, and on this island. And we, we know you had to step down from Caja and when she became the director. And, but I'm so glad you didn't step away from continuing to give back to the island, which you've done as well for, for many, many years. And serving in this capacity of, at PBS, I, I know you're going to do an excellent job. I brought it up earlier to I brought up earlier to Betty Gill about fundraising efforts. And I know that PBS is one area where they do quite a bit of fundraising, uh, in that perspective. And I'm pretty sure that, uh, you have some ideas and, and to do that because I've seen you help, uh, other places, like even the village in, in Alahan, uh, the, uh, the hotel right outside of in Alahan, uh, working in that area and trying to build up, uh, um, you know, capacity and growing when it comes to helping our, our children, uh, moving forward in the arts and, and just in our heritage and our culture and keeping it strong. So the only thing I ask is to make sure, please, fun, to, when you're writing down the words of the village, that it's now spelt correctly. Since we did the change of name change, I'm still hearing some of the mayors pronounce, uh, you know, ag, uh, hogget, agget, you know? And, uh, this is one way, uh, we can do that through the education of our youth on, uh, the correct pronunciations and spellings of our, our villages. We are not, you know, uh, what is it called? Not changing it, we're restoring, we're restoring it. And I know that you're going to do a good job at doing that. So I'm very excited that you're, you're back serving the people of Guam again and always, door is always open if there's anything else I could do. And I, I thank you too, Sandy, uh, you know, for your work at, at the agency and taking over Lassia, um, as well. You've got your hands full there. So, uh, appreciate again, all your hard work. Thank you, Judy Estha.
Thank you, Senator Titigui, and thank you to all of my colleagues for being here today and to, uh, Dr. Flores, to do a Mossi again for being here, for your testimony, answering our questions and, uh, your willingness to serve in this capacity. We look forward to, uh, completing your committee report and moving your nomination at the end of this month during session and supporting your nomination. I'd like to thank everyone again for being here. Again, uh, Ms. Betty Gill, thank you for sticking around to the end and all those who, uh, were here to testify, so to us Mossi. And with that, uh, these two appointments for Elizabeth C. Gill to serve as Member of Hagania Restoration and Redevelopment Authority Board of Commissioners and Dr. Judith S. Flores to serve as Member Guam Educational Telecommunications Corporation, KGTF PBS Board of Trustees, has been duly heard. And this public hearing is now adjourned at 2:52 PM. If you would like to send any written testimony, you may do so by emailing senatormunia barns@guamlegislature.org or you may hand deliver it to 163 Chalantanta Papa Hagania Guam 96910. So do us Mossi and be safe, everyone. Have a great weekend.
Thank you.